Everyone, good morning. Good morning. We'd like to welcome everyone to the Mesa City Council Study Session for the morning of Thursday, February 22nd. All of our council are present. The first item on our agenda for this meeting is to review the agenda we have for our Monday, February 26th meeting. So council, if you could please refer to that document. Mr. Brady, I think there are some presentations, I know, related to the sign ordinance or maybe...
We have a billboard.
Okay, billboards.
We have a presentation.
Right. So council, that is on the agenda, some changes to the billboard ordinance. We have a staff presentation queued up for that. Other questions regarding Monday's agenda?
I do.
Mr. Freeman.
Thank you. On 4E, I'd sent a... I just wanted, on our AMI metering structuring, it seemed like some of our costs were pretty high. And as I went through it, I just kind of wanted an understanding for myself and maybe my colleagues about it because as I looked at the end result, it's like $10 million more than what we were requesting, but yet there were some other numbers in there. So I'd just like a good overview. Thank you, Candace and Ed and Chris.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Yes, we assumed that you would have some questions regarding this particular project. We know this project is very important to the council and to the community at large. And so this is our automated metering infrastructure, which we call, it's AMI for short, but we usually call it the Smart Metering Project, is usually how we refer to it. Council approved our contract with Sensus, who was our contractor, to put in both the infrastructure and the meters back in '21. We are now in full deployment, so we're now going across citywide and installing all of the meters, so we have crews out there. We have about probably 30 FTEs between the contractor and our city employees who are out and exchanging meters or retrofitting meters with their register on those. When we started this project, we had some supply chain issues with the meters themselves. We actually could not get the meters during all the supply chain coming out of COVID. That kind of delayed it a little while. We now have access to the meters. Unfortunately, the component parts that create, to make those meters, have gone up in price, therefore the meters have gone up in price. And then we have some scope changes where we've gone out in the field, now that we've been out in the field for a while. There's some issues related to the water meters and the boxes themselves and the physical environment that those water meters are in that are causing us to have to do, replace more boxes. And we found some, there's about, we've estimated about 15,000 of the meters are actually in very deep pits and require risers in order to be serviced. So a combination of adding risers for about 15,000 meters, the boxes themselves, we thought that maybe about 5% of the boxes would need to be replaced, about 10% is what we're estimating now. Would need to be replaced now that we've been in the field for a little while. And then all of the lids, we originally, we're going to replace all of the lids, that's part of the project because the radio goes into the lids and so that it can communicate out, or the antenna, I should say, goes into the lid. The lids, the boxes, and the risers are all made from materials from a polymer that has just risen in price far beyond anybody's expectation of what it takes to put those together. About half of the increase we're looking at, so the net increase on this project is $10 million, about half of that is due to those components, the risers, the boxes, and the lids related to water meters themselves. The other half of that is just the cost of the meter and the labor for the installation of those meters across the, not just citywide, but service-wise. Remember, our services are also outside of the city of Mesa, down in our magma area for our gas meters. So that's the main drivers, if you will, of those. We've tried to itemize it really well by showing you what the costs were in the original contract, line item, the line item costs, with their revised costs going into this contract here. But those are our two main factors about what those cost increases are.
Yeah, great overview. When I saw water meter boxes jump up by 2.5 mil, I thought, wow, that's a huge increase.
How many boxes?
For, the boxes are for an estimated 15,000 boxes. We originally were estimating about 7,400 boxes would be needed. The increase went up from 5% to 10% of the total inventory to about 15,000 boxes.
So it's a quantity and a price increase?
It's both a quantity and a price increase. The lids themselves, just to give you some, so the lid increase is $1.4 million, so there's no increase in the quantity on those lids. We were going to replace 100% of the lids. The lid cost itself went up 35.3%. So just to give you a context of what we're looking at for what these are made out of, and so then when you add in the boxes that are a more costly item, plus adding the quantity to that, the risers themselves, again, we're estimating about 15,000 boxes or water meters will need those risers because they're in very deep pits. And those 15,000 are, they're $152 per riser. So if you do $152, doesn't sound like much, but when you multiply it by 15,000 that we had estimated our needs would be, then you get into some larger money.
Okay. Yeah, and I just noticed the meter site work repairs went up by like 2.3 million too. So is that more labor involved at those locations for the meter repair? Or is that the equipment itself?
It's actually for, a lot of the site repair is actually cleaning out the pits. So we did anticipate that some of the, remember, water meters are in the ground, so it's a box in the ground. And over time, things accumulate in there, rocks and soil and debris, as well as living things sometimes make homes in there as well. There's a whole lot of things that are happening inside those pits because they are in the ground. And so all of this site work we're looking at, we are going out and trying to have, part of the contract is cleaning of those boxes so that when the technical labor gets on, they're not, they're able to go in and just replace those meters or replace the box as needed. So we have a crew that's going out, they have folks that are going out and cleaning those pits ahead of the actual installers coming through. So there's all of those different items that are going into there. Some of these haven't been touched in a very long time.
Yeah.
So at the end of this project, we're going to end up with every single water meter that we have in the city will be touched, will be evaluated, and will be fixed if necessary.
So jumping over to the financial part of it, we'll be able to cover the expenses for this, the extra...
It's over a period, it's, yes, I mean...
It's spread out, I know.
So it just rolls up into the total cost of the utilities, the water utilities. Now, the interesting thing that happens is replace these meters, Chris, you can answer this question, is it appears that we, they become more accurate and we're able to capture a lot more of the usage than we did before. So we actually gain accuracy and revenues from replacing these meters at the same time.
And the customer's saving money as well as we are.
A lot more...
We're saving money, water as well.
Isn't that what you say, Chris?
Yeah, well, some customers can save a lot of money because we can spot leaks in almost real time.
Yeah.
We discovered that in Phase 1, the pilot phase, we discovered multiple leaks where we identified them with the software right away, made contact with the customer, and they had no idea because there were leaks in the backyard and irrigation. And it might not seem a lot, but it could add up to 20,000 gallons in a month. Traditionally, they would see that on a bill or two bills, and they'd be freaking out, and they'd contact us, and we'd have to work through it with them. Now, you can call them immediately, they can get a plumber, which they did, and they can stop and fix that leak right away. So we've calculated that once this is complete, we're going to save 2 million gallons a day through that process.
Well, I want to thank the crews going out because the other morning I went out and I could smell natural gas, and I'm going, okay, where's the leak at? And the gas meter guy was next door changing out the gas meter to AMI. So he was doing his job, and so he did my home as well. But regardless, I know the crews are out there, as well as city and the contractor crew as well. So, no, I just wanted to make sure that I understood the process on why it's costing $2 million more than what we projected, but...
One thing, Mayor, Councilmember Freeman, I want to point out is, if you look at the original approved contract, it was two and a half years ago. And for two and a half years, we've been coming up here, project after project, and the CIP, talking about how that project has gone up 50% or even sometimes 100%, frightening numbers. But Ed's team with purchasing has worked over the last two and a half years with the vendor, really scrutinizing any cost claims they've had, looking at where we're going to land. So that's why it's two and a half years later, this is the first time we've talked about any cost escalation. And instead of 50% or north of that, it's only 13%. So, and some of that are the quantities, like we talked about with the boxes. Those boxes aren't something that's in our inventory. Those have been put in the ground over the last 50 to 100 years. And we went off the best information that we had, and even in Phase 1, we didn't discover much of a derivation from what we originally assumed. But as we started into Phase 2, we did discover some of these older neighborhoods where the boxes were in bad shape. So we were going to have to spend that money at some point in time anyway to replace those boxes. We're really just kind of pulling it forward.
Okay. Well, thank you. I know some of the residents in my district asked me about what's going on, and I'll be able to tell them a little smarter now.
And then another thing I would note on this is, with where we are today, we now do have the gas meters and the water meters, the prices are set on that contract, which we didn't have when we originally did this. It was a moving, we hadn't placed the order yet, right? We had just done the contract with our contractor. But at this point in the game, we now have set on certain prices, and so we won't see those move over the lifetime.
What's our timeline now to complete this?
We're looking at the, probably toward the end of 2026, to have full implementation of the meters themselves. I can't give you an update right now on the portal. I know that's a big question everybody wants to know, is when can I go in and look at my consumption? We did have a little bit of a delay on the portal. The portal that we were intending to use does not meet our needs. And so, excuse me, we'll be looking at other options next month and coming back with an option that would meet the needs of the city and the resident.
Okay. Well, thank you.
How many total meters are there that you have to convert?
Well, for water meters, there's about shy, a little shy of 160,000, I think in total with gas and electric.
Right. And so far, in what we have done, just kind of give you an update on where we are so far. For water meters, we have installed or converted 4.5% of the total, and the total's about 155,000 that is involved in this contract. Now, we're always doing new meters, so if there's a new development that comes in, those are already getting smart meters, but they're getting them not through this contract. This contract is just existing meters. So for water, it's 4.5% are completed, a total of about 155,000. In gas, we're about 12.5% of those have been converted, and that total is just over 58,000. And in electric, we have 22.3% have been converted in a total of about 17,000.
So not quite a quarter million, between 200,000 and 250,000 total.
Total. And then remind me the source of funding for this project?
This is bond, this is a bond funded project. And so there are multiple, there are three commodities, so it would be water bonds, gas bonds, and electric bonds.
So it all gets rolled up in utility rates?
So it's all part of the utility bond program, three different areas though.
Okay. Thank you.
When you said the estimated completion is 2026, is that just for the water meters or is that for all of the smart meters?
That'd be for the entire, all three service areas, gas, electric, and water.
Okay.
Water would be the largest of those.
Water is the largest of those.
Very good. Well, thank you for asking the question, Mr. Freeman. I think it's good to remind ourselves that there's the why for this, which is, it's going to be better for our customers, but it's also going to help us with water conservation, it'll help us with our climate action goals, so, and things wear out, right? Especially things buried in the ground, so, good to know. Any other questions on this, Council? Ms. Spilsbury?
Oh, not on this.
Okay, that's all right. I think we're done with this one, right? Thank you very much.
I'm just wondering, on 4H, Holly, are we, what kind of campaigns are going out there statewide to make people aware that the primaries are up a week?
Well, for us locally, we have newspaper article going out for four days next week, and we have a press release, I think, that's going out today. I just proved it yesterday, and putting things on social media and on our website. And the state is doing a lot of things. They have newsletters that go out and all over their internet too about the changes.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you. I think that's something that needs to be mentioned as much as we can so people know when to vote.
Sure. So what is the new primary election date?
July 30th.
July 30th, all right. I ask naively, as if I cared.
Wow, that'd take a while.
That's true, yeah. Of course. Sorry, that was a little flippant. Council, other questions regarding Monday's agenda? Ms., yes?
Yeah, and this is probably for Candace. I was just curious about oh, for the ADOT abandonment. I've lost where it is, A and B maybe? Just, I'm just curious when that occurs, why? I know it said you've been working with ADOT for several years now on this. I'm just curious why that's happening.
I think this is, I think this is ADOT's way of transferring responsibilities to us, is that right?
Yeah, cost and maintenance.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. My name's Orlando Otero. The Deputy Transportation Director, Field Operations. Councilmember, go forth. You're correct. This is similar to what happened in, you guys approved in December, where we, where you approved the turnback of the right-of-ways from ADOT back to the city on the US 60. This is just more of the same, so this is something that RJ and Eric have been working with, with ADOT, to get back the maintenance that was once ours before the freeways went in. ADOT's really basically saying that we should continue with the maintenance now that they've built their infrastructure. Anything that they don't have their infrastructure on, it should resume back to the city of Mesa.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Council, other questions regarding Monday's agenda? All right, if there are, if there is none, moving on. Item 2A on our agenda is a presentation and discussion on the proposed Mesa zoning code text amendments.
There was lots of on the agenda, so they wanted to...
Good morning, Mayor and Council. A few months back, we did a study session on a proposed billboard text amendment. Since that time, staff's been working on the draft amendment, and we went to Planning and Zoning Board last week for a recommendation. So today before you is a presentation that will be on your agenda on Monday to intro the proposed billboard text amendments. So why are we looking at the proposed text amendments for billboards? We're looking to create opportunities for development and redevelopment of larger sites. We're also looking for that opportunity to partner with some private organizations or public organizations so that we can message city activities and public service announcements on those billboards. We've looked to develop standards that will make sure that we're enhancing the city's built environment to minimize any potential impacts and to respond to the market as it relates to billboards. In looking at the criteria that a billboard placement would have to follow, we're looking at only recommending that they be allowed in the public semi-public district, the mixed-use district, the infill development district too. Those districts would have to then be, those sites within those districts would then have to be 50 acres or larger, and they'd have to have a minimum freeway frontage of 1,500 feet.
So Mary, how many properties are like that along the 60?
Mayor, Councilmember Freeman, there are two that meet all of the criteria that I'm going to go through. Those are just two of the criteria, but there are other things that other properties would be pulled out of because of, they wouldn't meet it. So the, any billboard would have to be placed within 250 feet of the freeway. It would have to be set back from a residential zone or use unless it was part of a mixed-use development by 500 feet to keep that separation from our residential neighborhoods. It would have to be separated from another billboard by 1,200 feet. You may remember during the study session, we had initially looked at 1,500 feet. In reevaluating that, we actually are recommending 1,200 feet between them. It doesn't change the number of potential billboards. It just allows for the two sites that do end up being eligible under all of the criteria to both have two on their site. We've included, this separation includes billboards in adjacent communities so that we're not seeing a conglomeration of them if they're in the county or another community. And it includes both the existing or proposed billboards. So if there's an existing billboard, you would still have to be 1,200 feet away from it. We're also looking at, oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I have a question again. So is that from a pin drop, if a billboard wants to go on, if it's across the freeway in another community, does that count in the 1,200 feet, or it has to be linear, or...
So what we would do is we would measure from parcel line to parcel line where the billboards are located for that 1,200-foot separation.
So are we including those in other communities as well?
Yes.
Okay. So just make it easier for me to understand. So if we built one in Mesa, on the Mesa side, and Gilbert had one on the Gilbert side, within the 1,200 feet, would the Mesa side be allowed to build?
It would not be allowed to build if it was within 1,200 feet of an existing billboard.
Mr. Freeman, we're only talking about two specific sites.
I know.
So there won't be any other application to this under those two.
We've received some emails on billboards.
Right. But for the context of this action is specifically for two properties.
Okay. Gotcha. Okay.
Then we're also looking at a separation from existing or proposed freeway landmark signs of also 1,200 feet. Again, because they also have that freeway presence with the billboards, we didn't want to have too many of them, again, located within a certain amount of area.
There is billboards currently, just a reminder to the public, there's billboards currently on our freeways, but not necessarily on City of Mesa property, but it looks like it's City of Mesa. Can you just...
Sure.
I know you mentioned in a prior conversation that, you know, these are county islands that are located like on the 202. There's some on the 60 that have popped up, but again, we don't have any control on those, like county islands that folks, private businesses have developed billboard signs, right?
Sure. Mayor, Councilmember, or Vice Mayor, Heredia, that's correct. There are a lot of county islands where you'll see billboards exist today that is not within the city limits. There also may be a billboard that is grandfathered in, that could be a static billboard versus an electronic billboard. So this is not going to affect them, this is not going to require them to change anything. This is just for new billboards within the city.
And Mayor and Councilmembers, if I could make one point of clarification about the measurement between the billboards, it's between the face of the billboard to the next face of the billboard is how that 1,200 feet gets measured.
Thank you, Rachel. So the next thing we looked at were the number and the size standards, so we're looking at a maximum of two billboards per site. So no one site would have more than two billboards on it. We're also looking at a minimum, or sorry, a maximum sign area per face of 672 square feet and 20% for an embellishment. These are based on some of the research we did, these are fairly common industry standards as it relates to billboards. In terms of the height, we're looking at a maximum height of 48 feet above the adjacent freeway grade or elevation, and that would include any embellishments that were on that freeway or on that billboard, and it would be no more than 70 feet above the site's finished grade. So we've tried to give a diagram here to kind of demonstrate what that would look like if the freeway were above where the finished grade where the billboard would sit. In terms of the digital display standards, again, the billboard regulations will apply to both static and electronic billboards, so if it is a digital display, the network time and federal, state, and local public service announcements would be required. So we would require a development agreement so that the city would have that availability to put up amber alerts, events that are occurring within the city so that we can advertise different things that are occurring within the city on those billboards. There would be no animation, flashing, blinking, or moving lights. Again, we don't want to distract drivers, we don't want to create any safety issues. The display would not be able to change sooner than every eight seconds, and then there would be no transition allowed, so the image would just appear. In terms of the illumination...
I'm sorry, Ms. Spilsbury.
Sorry, I didn't see you.
Yeah. Do we have any data on whether these billboards make freeway driving unsafe or less safe or...
So Mayor, Councilmember Spilsbury, I, we don't have any data on that. That is, we didn't look at the safety aspects of it. What we did do was research ways to minimize distractions for billboards. That's why you don't want flashing, blinking lights. You want the copy to change no sooner than every eight seconds so that it doesn't create that visual distraction. Those are the kinds of things. And again, those are pretty standard in the industry. When we did our research, that's what most jurisdictions, we also looked at the state statute related to billboards and followed that closely also, so that we're making sure we're following all of those regulations.
Some of the emails we got claimed that they make it unsafe, and so I guess I just wondered, is that just what people think, or is there data to back that up at all? And are we, are we pretty sure these will be digital billboards or static? Like, do we, or we just don't know that yet?
The assumption is they'll be digital, because that's where the, there's a lot more money...
That's where you're, in 2024, that's what you do is...
Every eight seconds, you're making a new, it's a new account.
Okay, instead of changing what it is. Okay, so we're assuming they're digital and we don't have data on that.
No, but again, we're, the eight seconds is within this, it is, again, the industry standard because that doesn't create...
You would bypass that before it would change.
Either that, or you would be far enough away that it wouldn't create that distraction. So in terms of the illumination standards, we would require dimmers on all the digital billboards so that from sunset to 11:00 PM, it would be a maximum of 300 nits, which is, again, this is an industry standard to kind of lower the glow of the billboards. And then all illumination would have to be extinguished at 11:00 PM to sunrise so that we protect our night skies. And this would also apply to any static billboards. If they did have a static billboard with lights that lit that billboard, they would have to extinguish them at 11:00 PM also.
I can't remember if this was later on in the presentation, but, and I suppose I could look at a map, but the particular spots we're looking at, are there any neighborhoods that would be affected by this light?
So we have, the two sites would be the old Fiesta Mall site and then MCC, so not really within the proximity of where there's billboards.
Frankie knows better with that.
You look, well, the Fiesta Mall is being in conversations around a mixed-use development, so there'll be people living there, but I think it will be an environment that will have a lot of light and a lot of activity, we hope. And MCC, you know, you got that college, you do have apartments on the other side of the freeway, so it's, that's, you know, however their position, you know, will dictate kind of the light, but there's already lights on the freeway, there's already a lot of noise there, so that's, that's kind of where, where those two sites have those things available. And Fiesta, I think there's a commercial space on the corner of Alma School on the other side, and then there's some apartments on the other side as well, but kind of...
So, but probably no single-family residential anywhere near where it would be affected by this?
No, it's not.
Okay. Longmore?
Further in, yeah. There's apartments on the edges and then some single-family after that, after apartments,
And then finally, in terms of the process, we are looking at establishing a billboard overlay district. This would allow city council to have that legislative approval to rezone. They'd have discretion for each case. And the last time we presented, we talked about potentially putting in a sunset on the ordinance. After further review and discussions, there is no sunset on the ordinance. We've also, again, I brought up the development agreement that would be required so that we would ensure that we have public service announcement content on the billboards, in that development agreement would be with both the property owner and the billboard So staff is recommending that city council adopt the proposed zoning ordinance billboard text amendments. And as I mentioned last Wednesday, we were at the Planning and Zoning Board, and there was a vote of 5-0 also to recommend approval. And with that, I think that's the end of our presentation.
Thank you very much. Mr. Sommers?
Just a quick question. Is there, is there a maintenance standard as well for the billboards? Because you go, you go buy so many billboards on a freeway and they look like crap because they're neglected.
Mayor, Councilmember Sommers, that is included in the ordinance.
All right, thank you.
So Scott pulled up his map, so we were just looking at it, but it does look like there's some single-family homes across the freeway, and their backyards and back windows would be probably right across the freeway from the billboard by MCC. So I just don't want to do anything that's like really gonna... So I just don't want to do anything that's like really going to disrupt people's life and their, you know, so like how can we, they wouldn't be facing them, right? So I just don't know what kind of light we're talking about and across an entire freeway and the lights on the freeway, if that would even be affected. Like, is there some way someone can guarantee me it's not going to affect those neighbors right there?
So it's, it's west is letta.
South side of the freeway?
There you go.
It's the south side of the freeway, and it's right across from MCC, so, I mean, I have no idea, all of those houses right there. I know, I can't.
There's our SRP canal there, or, and then there's a big retention wall.
Yeah, there's a wall.
There's a wall like right.
You probably don't even see those homes.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
The good news, Mayor and Council, is this is the first step. Once Council approves this, so you'll have an introduction on Monday, then you have the ordinance of the following week, or following Monday. But that doesn't, all that does puts it in place for the possibility, right? Then what has to happen is that for both of these, it requires a development agreement. Then those development agreements will go back to Council, too. Then it'll be much more specific about location.
And probably studies done on.
Yeah, so we can, we'll probably answer some of those questions then.
Okay.
But this is just, we can't go to these property owners and have a discussion about a development agreement until we have this in place, so that's kind of a run.
And I think there's also, you know, looking at the slide on the angles and kind of how do you position those, I think there's ways to position those that are not, like, you wouldn't put a billboard that faces like across the street, right? Like, you're angling those billboards towards the site, I think, so. And I think, just to add other comments, you know, these two sites, Fiesta, I think we're, as I mentioned, mixed-use development, we stress on the use of what's going to happen in that site to be an important kind of navigator to, you know, if there's entertainment or those kinds of things happening in that site, that this will help kind of generate that attention in those areas, in that area for people to come in, to, you know, shop there or, you know, spend their money there, and then MCC as well, right? So trying to facilitate a conversation around the Makes a Promise program and other PSAs and informational pieces that will hopefully help us build more funding for programs at MCC and what's happening there. So I think integrating what those two sites mean, I think it has been some part of that conversation and how we are having those discussions to have billboards in these specific areas, right? So.
I'd just like to tag in, thank you District Two for your comments on positioning, because ironically, on the 202 freeway in the county between Country Club and Center Street, just because of the curve, there's electronic billboards there. And because of the residential streets, east and west, the people whose homes are on those streets, they see those electronic billboards flashing at them all the time. And so there's been emails to District One about the obtrusiveness of the billboards, electronic billboards, and it's just the way geographic is, the way the curve of the freeway is, and so I think we need to be sensitive to single-family residences and how they're placed in the future and the heights and work that all out, because there's nothing we can do about that. These billboards are in the county, grandfathered, and consequently, they meet a whole different set of standards. I don't know if our standards are the same as the county or vice versa, but, or better, but regardless, just, we need to be sensitive to that as it moves forward. So I'm just sharing with you, thank you.
Mr. Summers?
I have no further questions, I'm just going to say, knowing that the neighborhood's probably going to come in, let's remove 5B from the consent agenda, please.
In anticipation of people coming in? Okay. Great, 5B will be off. Let me chime in a little bit. And I'm not talking about things that are off of the agenda, Mr. Smith, I hope, but I think the discussion here actually needs to be about a couple of questions. Number one, do we want to increase higher education attainment in our city? Do we want to increase enrollment at Mesa Community College, which has been in decline? And do we want to redevelop Fiesta Mall? I think these are all priorities in our community. If we, by making this adjustment to the sign ordinance, we can create a fund, you know, I think there's probably already a hundred or a few hundred billboards in our city, so I don't think there's going to be a noticeable change in the number of, if we add two in front of Mesa Community College, two in front of Fiesta Mall, that's a drop in the ocean in terms of, is that really going to change the environment in our city? Absolutely, we need to be sensitive to neighboring residential neighborhoods, and we will. And so as Mr. Brady indicated, this is introducing the ordinance, we'll come back and have a public hearing on the ordinance. After that, we will negotiate development agreements or intergovernmental agreements with both of those entities, and so any obtrusiveness, I think, can be addressed at that time. And I'm not suggesting that we downplay those, the interests of our neighbors. We need to be very sensitive to them, but on the plus side, this, this could create the funding so that anyone going to Mesa Community College, the assumption is that it'll be paid for. The potential revenue on a digital billboard, I've heard through the grapevine, is like $800,000 a year. And if Mesa Community College were receiving well over $1 million a year for their scholarship programs, that's a game changer. That could really change the trajectory of that campus, and it could have a significant impact on our citywide educational attainment. So that's, that's not a small goal, and I think we ought to pursue that. The same is true for Fiesta Mall. If we don't have some sort of incentives, some sort of reason to be involved in the discussion with the developer of that property, it, you know, we won't have a huge amount of say in how that develops. And so if we can incentivize seeing public good things happening in the redevelopment at site by negotiating a development agreement that offers this as an incentive, again, that's a, that's a real plus. So I think the potential for downside is certainly there, we need to be sensitive to those few homes that are in the neighborhood, but I think the plus side in some very strategic areas is, is huge. So, yeah, I would love to see us go forward with this, and I certainly want any, any concerned voices to show up Monday night, and again, the following council meeting when we have the public hearing on it, and then absolutely weigh in when the actual agreements are negotiated.
I have one question, Mayor.
Thank you.
So we said this only affects these two sites, but Mary, I have a couple of sites in my district that are greater than 50 acres, highway frontage, how will that, how will it affect those?
Mayor, Councilmember, go forth. We've done a pretty thorough GIS analysis, and I think the first criteria is the three zones that they're allowed in.
Okay.
So those parcels may not be in those zones, they may be a county island, they just don't meet the whole set of criteria, so when we layer them on top of each other, only the two come out.
And along the 202, most of that is right away.
I'm talking about the 60, though, and maybe it is county at the moment, but it's not projected to be county within months, so.
And Mayor, Councilmember, go forth. I have on, up on the map, there are potential sites that could be, if they were to be either annexed and or disowned properly, these would be the other potential sites that could qualify.
Those are the only two. What is the red, where's the red one? What are those cross streets? 60 and what?
60 and Powers, so that would be the Fiesta Mall.
A superstition.
Fiesta Mall. Okay, that's.
Which they already have.
Okay, so the site near Signal View is not, does not, is not a potential site for greater than 60 acres, mixed use, highway frontage?
Mayor, Councilmember, go forth. At this point, I'd have to go back and look, but there, I'd have to figure, I'd have to see which of the criteria it's not meeting that it was pulled out. It may be the zoning, it may be the zoning.
Okay. And then that, the site just to the southeast of the intersection between the 202 and the 60, there's another large, over 50-acre site that if we could just, if you could just kind of let me know.
Ellsworth, is what we're talking about, which one?
Uh huh, to the.
Yeah, right in the corner.
Mm-hmm, right in the corner.
Now, that was challenged just because of the topography is so set down low.
So maybe the high apartment.
I may never get anything up to see from that point, but we can look at it again.
Yeah, if you could just let me know. Councilmember, go forth, is this the site you're speaking of right here?
No, it's north of the 60.
North of 60.
Yeah.
It may not have the right zoning.
Okay. I don't think it has any zoning, it's in the county right now. Right, so the proposed zoning.
So they could go and put one up on their own now.
Right, for sure.
And a lot of, that's what happens with a lot of property, especially southeast Mesa, that are not in the city, the property owner will go and get the sign permit, whatever, from the county before they annex into the city.
And then what happened?
And it's just grandfathered.
Mr. Summers?
I just really reminded myself that 5B is just an introduction, we can put that on, we can have that on consent, I don't have a problem with that.
Great, thank you. Back to Ms. Goldford's question, the potential redevelopment of Superstition Springs, if that were to happen, if they were to come in and say, we don't, we want to change the use from being retail to mixed use, and, and then that might, well, is that, right now there are large monuments signs, if my recollection.
Are those monuments, because they're on, they're for that site.
Yeah, advertising the.
We'd want that to be consistent.
Right, so it's not like they would go from no signage to signage, because you'd be replacing potentially the monument.
Right, it wouldn't go from monuments, I don't know what the term, right term is.
Freeway landmark, yeah.
Freeway landmark, we wouldn't allow to go from a freeway landmark to a billboard. The difference being, you know, even Fiesta had a freeway landmark, because it advertised for the tenants that were at the site. The billboard allows you to advertise for anything. So I think, at least my thinking, Superstition Springs, that would be great, come in, new redevelopment, but I think we would be firm that it still would be a freeway landmark sign. So it would have to be promoting or something related to the activities at that location.
Just to be clear, potentially, if Superstition Springs were to say, we want to change our use, we want to, would this, would the changes to this ordinance apply to them? Would they meet the criteria?
They are one of the sites that potentially could, if they were to rezone to one of the qualifying zoning districts.
Okay. So I would argue that that gives us leverage in that situation as well, where the city would then be at the table discussing, okay, we can offer you, you know, a couple of signs if we can reach an agreement.
But that would be up to policymakers, up to that council, right? Whether or not allowing another, more billboards at that location allow for the public policy trade-off, right? Of allowing more billboards, and then where are you going to get back in return?
Right.
As far as the type of development or whatever. So that would, that's what this allows for, is those discussions happen at that time. Now, that becomes a value discussion of the council about, are we getting enough back in return for allowing these billboards or not? And so those are discussions that we still have to have.
They wouldn't be, the developer wouldn't be able to do it by right.
Right, it would still be, we would still be involved in this discussion about.
Because it's a rezone.
Rezone, and just the way that, remember, this, this is not as of right the billboard, I mean, even after you approve this, the development agreement has to come in place, and that, the council can make that decision.
Mayor and Council, remember, there's a base zone requirement for this, and so there's only a few sites that have the correct base zone, and so that's, and the size. There's other properties that have the size but not the base zone, but in addition to the development agreement, they have to get an overlay zone, an additional zoning. So for the two sites that currently are eligible, in addition to the development agreement, they're going to have to go through a rezoning to get an overlay zone, and we haven't had a freeway landmark for a while, but that, that, it'll be similar to that process, and so it's going to go to P&amp;Z, the overlay zone is going to go to P&amp;Z, they're going to show a sign, they're going to show sightlines from, to the freeway and to the neighborhoods, and you'll have a chance to look at it. The heights that Mary was talking about, those are maximums, right? Those are maximums. As part of the rezoning with the overlay zoning, you can change that, and an overlay zone is a legislative act, and so council has full discretion to approve or deny that overlay zoning, and that's why that's very important, to know that the, it's an overlay zone for all of these, but other sites potentially in the future might be eligible for that overlay zoning, so there always will be a rezoning involved.
Mr. Summers?
So bouncing off Mr. Brady's question about what is the value coming back to the city, even if we approve this, the two current sites would have to come back through P&amp;Z and council to say, here's the benefit that the city is going to realize in the development on the site. Yeah, we won't, even after you approve it, they can't just walk in and ask for, even for the overlay, they can't even ask for the sign until, and both, both groups know it's going to take, there's going to be a lot of discussion then, for the city to feel like, okay, we're getting something in return for this. Okay.
Great, yeah, this has been a great discussion, thank you, and I hope this will continue with our council meeting and in the discussions with the, with the owner of the properties, including the college. Good discussion. I'm sorry, did we, did you finish your presentation?
We did.
All right. Thank you very much. And again, this was information, it'll be on the agenda Monday, currently it's on the consent agenda, we'll see if that changes.
Get it right, Jen.
Thank you very much. Next item, item 2B on our discussion for today is a presentation and discussion on the draft Mesa 2050 general plan. Mary will move over one chair for this.
Just to get a different view.
Thank you. So Mary, I know last week I asked you questions and you said, we're coming back to talk about the people, right?
That's correct, Mayor Giles.
Thank you.
So today, our presentation will be on the people, the economy, and the action plan. Rachel will walk us through the people and the different sections within that part of the plan. Jeff is actually going to do the economy, our economist, so he'll walk us through the economy, and then I'll talk a little bit about the action plan at the end.
All right, thank you, Mayor and Council. So as Mary was saying, we are going over the people, the economy, and we're touching briefly on the action plan this morning. So starting off with the people, this was a very important core value that came out of our public outreach. We heard over and over again from our public how important and how central that family and friends are to reasons why they love the city, and how important that is to look to the future of how we develop our city for friends and family. But we also heard how important our community is and how the strong community really has influenced, is one of the main reasons that people choose to live here. So within the people, there are five sections that really speak to some of these concepts, and those are great neighborhoods, history, arts and culture, human services, and public safety, and I'll be going over each one of those sections in more detail. So the first one of these are great neighborhoods. The guiding principle for this is that our neighborhoods are vibrant, diverse, and safe places where people thrive. From our public outreach and from the existing conditions report, there were a few key themes that came out of those, and those were community character. So one thing that we heard quite often from our community was how much people value the heritage and the diversity of their neighborhoods, and how they really want to retain those aspects of the neighborhoods. We heard a lot about complete communities and how important it is for people to have all of those aspects in a community together, such as their homes, parks, schools, places of worship, and commercial opportunities, kind of central to really satisfy their day-to-day activities. We also heard a lot about the importance of neighborhood revitalization, and how we really value our neighborhoods, but we do realize that they change over time, and we want to ensure that they're remaining great places for our people to live, and how important it is to upkeep those neighborhoods. So through all that outreach, that great neighborhoods section, it acknowledges that the unique character of our neighborhoods adds to the vibrancy and vitality of Mesa, that our neighborhoods are more than just places to live, they're places that foster that social interaction that connects us to our communities, and that our neighborhoods are dynamic, and as I spoke to earlier, they're going to change over time. So with that, we have various strategies within great neighborhoods that talk to these concepts. The first one of those is that we strive to promote complete communities in both our existing and our new neighborhoods. The next is that we want to promote adaptive reuse and infill as a tool to rejuvenate and to revitalize established neighborhoods, and building off of that, we also want to continue to provide a robust code compliance program to ensure that our neighborhoods are well-maintained and clean. We also have strategies that we use neighborhood planning to engage our local communities and with them to define neighborhood-specific characters, values, and policies for those neighborhoods. And then finally, looking to improve our streets and open space network connectivity within our neighborhoods. within our neighborhoods and to local communities to, once again, try to establish that complete community. So the next section within the people is history, arts, cultural, and cultural resources. And the guiding principle for this is that our community values our heritage and embraces its diverse culture. So through the public outreach and existing conditions, the main themes that came out of that were the museums and our arts, public events, and public art. And these really all tie back to that idea of heritage and to our diverse culture. And what we heard from the community was that these are really the aspects that allow people to both celebrate their culture or their heritage, but also to educate people on different cultures and the heritage of the city itself. The other aspect that we heard in relation to these key themes was that Mesa is really emerging as a leader for culture tourism and how important that is to continue to build that and to promote that within the city. So within this section, it acknowledges that our diverse cultures and heritage welcomes peoples from all backgrounds, that our neighborhoods and our historic, our historic neighborhoods and landmarks are not just relics of the past, but they're living spaces that contribute to the identity of the city and that supporting strong and diverse arts and cultural programs and institutions benefit the city economically. So the strategies within the history, arts, and cultural resources is to enhance the community character and heritage by identifying and preserving significant historic sites, properties, structures, and districts. Strategies to support and encourage a variety of artwork in public places such as parks, public buildings, and plazas. To promote and expand our access to arts and cultural opportunities throughout the city and to expand Mesa's reputation as an arts and cultural tourism leader. The third section within the people is human services. And the guiding principle for this section is that our human services are compassionate and equitable. So our human services are, it's the education, it's the health care, and it's the social services that are provided within our city. And those are very important aspects to ensure that our community members have access to and opportunities to thrive. So within that, we heard key themes about education, social services, libraries, and addressing homelessness. So with that, this section acknowledges that Mesa is committed to supporting compassionate, equitable, and high quality human services, that while we're not the primary provider of these services, that we partner with our nonprofits to ensure that residents can achieve their full potential and that Mesa is an education friendly city where school is a high priority.
Ms. Spilsbury.
Yes.
To interrupt, I just heard you mention health care, but I don't see health care show up on these slides at all.
Yes, because these are the key themes that came out of the public outreach and health care was not necessarily one of the rising ones that came to the top. But it is, it is core to what human services is, that health care is really one of those main services.
And that's mentioned in the plan?
It is, yes. So the strategies within this section are to provide leadership and collaborate with community agencies to encourage and promote the development and expansion of human service programs, to increase the awareness and access to information about social service programs and options available in Mesa, to support an intentional local community response to homelessness with housing and supportive services, and to support high quality early childhood, primary, secondary, and higher education attainment in Mesa. The final section within the people speaks to public safety. And the guiding principle is that our city is safe and has exceptional public safety services. So safety came out quite a bit in the public outreach. People acknowledged and appreciate that Mesa is a safe city, but they want to continue to see it remain a safe city and place where their family can remain and live. But with that, it's not, it wasn't just about the public safety services that they're receiving. There was also a lot of discussion about education, receiving education, both for residences and for businesses and how we can be prepared to address any sort of safety situations. And then finally, building trust and relationships with our public safety officials also came up and the importance of that to kind of collaborate and to, you know, to prevent and identify any potential threats to the city, to have that strong relationship with the public service services. So with the public safety services, sorry. So with that, this section acknowledges that public safety is a key contributor to the quality of life in Mesa, that Mesa is committed to delivering top tier police, fire, and emergency medical services, and that Mesa is well prepared to handle large scale public safety incidents with up to date protocols aligned with national standards. So the strategies within this section are to continue to provide high quality responsive police, fire, and medical services to all residents and businesses, to prepare for large scale public safety incidents, to provide preventative safety education to Mesa residents and businesses, and to continue to strengthen trust between our public safety officials, our public safety servicers, and the public. And that is the end of the people section. Is there any comments before we move to the economy?
I just have to ask, I'm sorry, the question that I posed to Mary a couple of weeks ago was, how are we doing on higher education attainment? And if we have, we are, we're boasting that we're a city that has 40,000 higher ed students, is that the right number, given that we're a city of 520,000 people? I'm guessing probably not.
Yeah.
And so, yeah.
Mayor Council, when we looked at, you know, our surrounding cities and the county in general, we're a little bit lower than our neighboring jurisdictions as far as our higher educational entertainments. That's definitely something that in this plan, we talk a lot about workforce education, higher education development, and really trying to support and encourage that within the city.
Yeah. Could you go back one slide? Because I did see the higher ed, there we go, thank you. Support high quality early childhood, primary, secondary, and higher education attainment in Mesa. So that's one of the stated goals of the plan. And I guess we'll talk about action plans and what would be the checklist of things that we ought to do to make progress on that goal. Okay, great. Thank you very much. Mr. Freeman.
Yeah, I'm going to cherry pick and go in the weeds here on the presentation. And when you talked about the public safety and guiding principles, recently, we went through this thing called the COVID and we stood up our medical personnel and we did amuseations in our community, which was extremely important. I think that should be highlighted, that we're prepared for, you know, you say a large scale public safety incident. I don't know really what that means, but you could add, for example, immunization clinics for our residents in our community.
Okay.
You know, something, you know, kind of dial it in a little bit so people, because they relate to that. Whether you like an immunization shot or not, our city, we stood up and delivered a lot of immunizations, not only for the COVID, but other medical events.
All right, yeah, thank you, Councilmember Freeman. We can look at that section because there is, there is a, underneath each one of these strategies, it goes into detail and talks a little bit more about what this means, so we can take a look at that section.
Yeah, you might just add something to that effect. Thank you.
Well, to that point, I mean, you might get an actual anti campaign if you, if we mention the dreaded word vaccinations in the, you know what I'm saying?
I do, but it's important that all of us in the community have.
I do, yeah.
You know, I think that's probably the statement that's in here.
The general plan.
General plan. PS 2, does that sound right? I think this was written by fire because I know you guys are bright, but you don't know what NCIS is.
They would have edited.
Yeah, so it says, "Planning and preparation for large scale public safety incidents is critical for the city's residents and infrastructure. Unified cross training," sorry, "cross training across all emergency services aligned with a national incident command systems." So that's where I think public safety put that in here. So it's just this idea of it's an integrated response. So it doesn't get into whether it's a domestic terrorism, a natural disaster, or anything. It's just talking about making sure there's a collaborative effort that we can jointly work on responding to something.
No, I get it, I.
There's no, nothing in these sections does pull out a very specific, like.
Because there could be different large scale incidents that could happen in our community.
Right, well, not just that, but any of these sections, right? It's not, there's not a very, it's just kind of a, this is what we're trying to achieve over the next 10 years. Make sure we're ready for something like that.
Thank you. Ms. Duff.
Rachel, could you explain? We have our action plan, which details a lot of the actions to support these goals, the general plan. How does that integrate when, to the general plan? Do we review that or how does this work?
Yeah, Mayor, Councilmember Duff, we are going to be discussing the action plan at the end of this presentation, if that's all right. Is it okay if we wait till that portion?
All right, thank you. Ready to move forward, Council? All right, thank you.
All right, Mayor Council, so chapter four of our general plan is the economy and it has three sections. The first section is economic development and its guiding principle is that our economy is innovative and prosperous. The second section is environment, conservation, energy, and water. And its guiding principle is that our city is resilient and sustainable. And the last section is public facilities and services. And the guiding principle is that our public service enterprises are efficient, reliable, and cost effective. So diving right into economic development, we took key themes from public outreach, existing conditions, and also from the economic development strategic plan. And what we heard from residents is that it is important to continue to seek and to build within and to attract high quality jobs and to continue to support small businesses and entrepreneurship in the city. We heard from the Economic Development Advisory Board and many other residents about how important it is to protect our two airports and what an important economic driver they are to the city and especially to protect them from incompatible land uses near them. We heard about promoting tourism through quality development, supporting workforce development. That ties into education, which we discussed this morning, and making sure we have a pipeline of trained and talent for our companies, and also to diversify economic development opportunities in Southeast Mesa. And what we mean by that is we had a lot of comments that, well, there's, there sure are a lot of warehouses all in a row and maybe there's another way to bring in high, high end manufacturing, something else with also high design standards to continue to support the airport, but also to break up the warehouse massing in one area. So that's what we heard there. The economic development section also acknowledges that our location, Mesa's location, has, provides a competitive advantage for us and it helps us to attract target industries. We have to continue to innovate and be competitive in the national market and that our approach to economic development has to be multifaceted. And what we mean by multifaceted is when we think of jobs, we're not just attracting companies and putting the effort there, but we are also retaining and growing our own, so through business retention and expansion. And then when we think about workforce development, we're thinking about pre-K and that entire continuum up to post-secondary and then connecting those graduates with companies here at Mesa. So the strategies for economic development are attract businesses and employers that create jobs with wages at or above the regional average, investing in education and workforce development for Mesa residents and employees, sustaining a business climate that fosters entrepreneurs and small business, protecting and promoting Mesa's airports as global connections for tourism and business development, and then promoting Mesa as a regional entertainment and visitor destination, attracting quality product development. For our next section, environment, conservation, energy, and water, we heard key themes from our public outreach, existing conditions, also from the climate action plan and the water resources master plan, which is currently underway. And we, we heard that it's important to continue, I think, I think everybody agrees on this, that we want to continue to have a secure supply of water and energy for our residents. And then we heard from many residents how important it is that we are a good steward with the resources that we have. So our section acknowledges that Mesa's natural resources are valuable assets, that Mesa's pursuit of resilience and sustainability must respond to local conditions and Mesa should consider efforts within the larger context, so not just what's happening in Mesa, but regionally and in a much broader context of the whole Southwest. And Mesa is committed to proactively and responsibly protecting and conserving our environment and natural resources. Strategies for this section are to manage our water resources, to improve and safeguard water supply and dependability, to promote energy conservation and renewable energy generation, to improve stormwater management and water quality through sustainable development practices, to promote sustainable practices that foster resilient systems and reduce hazard risks, and finally, to protect future aggregate resource extraction. And we did note on there that that is required by state. So if you're wondering why in ours we're talking about aggregates, that's why. Not that it's not exciting, we love aggregates, but that's why it's there.
I'm sorry, say that again? That's there because the state requires us to say it?
Mayor Council, yes, the state requires that we address this as a strategy. And what we mean by aggregates is we know that they are important for the economy, but they have dust and noise, light, and so they are sometimes incompatible with certain uses, especially residential. And so creating buffers and ways to continue to allow them to do what they need to do to support our economy and also to protect the health and just the well being of our residents requires that we take that into consideration when we're planning the city.
Okay. So before you leave this section, to what extent is our climate action plan collaborative with this document? I mean, is it referenced, are the goals of one document, are they, do they reflect the same goals?
Mayor, yes. So since the climate action plan was adopted before this, many of those goals are fed up into the general plan. Sorry, I can't talk. But you'll see within each one of these sections, when we talk about specific goals, they're referenced in the discussion of these strategies.
Thank you.
And Mayor Giles, Council, if I can, one of the things we didn't want to do is mimic them specifically, but we wanted to capture the value and the essence of them in the general plan because those individual plans will be updated more regularly and we didn't want to have to update the general plan. So we're capturing it, they're definitely coordinated, but you won't see the language necessarily mimicked.
Understood, thank you. Ms. Duff.
Was there any feedback that we received, concerns about air quality? I know that's a state concern since we have one of the worst air quality in the metropolitan area.
Mayor, Councilmember Duff, I'm sure there was one or two, but they were, it was pretty minor. Water was the major concern. And part of that is, if you'll remember, when we were doing our initial outreach especially, it was during that season when everybody was wondering, boy, are we going to get through this current drought? And then we had the atmospheric rivers come in and people calm down. But, but that was happening at the same time. And so we heard a whole lot about water, that really was the focus.
Absolutely, I agree. I know, I don't know, I think there's, I read one article, and I'm trying to remember back, that some possible standards will come to the state about air quality and particulates.
Yep.
And so at that time, then would that trickle down to the city, that we would have to take measures in order for?
Well, it could. What it mostly means is that employers, new employers coming into the market are going to have a much different, more difficult time coming in and building their facilities because they won't be able to meet the standards. And that's what has, that's what everybody's concerned about. This is happening at the regional level, at the mag level, where these discussions are taking place. So that's where the conversation will come. Because like you said, this is a county's, this is where the county plays into this role. And there's a lot of discussions going on about, we will move to the next severity of air quality. Part of that is the EPA has also changed the standard, so they've kind of moved us beyond the mark. But yeah, there'll be more information coming about that. But that's what, but then there's the fear, the legislature's reacted to that too because, you know, is it going to require cities to impose regulations on using, you know, lawnmowers? Or a variety of things like that. So those are kind of the conversations that will be coming.
I know, we have air quality in our MCAP too, you know, identified there, so that we can take some measures. But we don't, at this point, need to have any action or measure in our general plan, so.
Mayor Giles, Councilmember Duff, I don't know if it's specifically to have an action about that because it is in the cap. So, and again, they feed into each other and they definitely talk to each other and mimic, and not mimic, they strive for the same goals. So I think that kind of detail would go into the cap rather than the general plan.
Okay, thank you.
Our next section is public facilities and services. The key themes that emerged from the public were importance of being fiscal, responsible fiscal management, I should say. So that really is, is using taxpayer resources wisely and then using technology to then extend what we have and to make the most use of it and most impact for the public. Public facilities. Public facilities and services section does acknowledge that public facilities and services reflect the basic functions provided by government in the community and that Mesa owns and operates nearly 500 facilities throughout the city and employs approximately 4,900 employees that help provide these services to the community. So the strategies for this section are provide fiscally sound planning, design and construction in public facilities, to continue to implement smart city strategies in the planning, operation and delivery of public facilities and services, providing sustainable energy, water, sewer, storm sewer, solid waste, I said it twice, solid waste and storm sewer services to residents, and then ensuring that private development contributes its fair share towards the construction and maintenance of public infrastructure. And again, Mayor Council, that is another requirement from state statute, which is why it appears here.
So the final portion of our presentation today will be on the action plan. And as you're all aware, we have a separate document, it's a standalone implementation tool of the action plan. The action have all been organized under the guiding plans, the guiding principles for the plan. And that's to show how each of those guiding principles would be implemented over that one to three years period that the action plan is covering. Each action describes the activity that needs to be undertaken, who are the responsible departments, both the lead and the support departments, and then the status, which is either not started, in progress, and hopefully at the end of the first cycle of the action plan, we'll see those that are completed. We've designed the action plan to help us to report out on the progress of the general plans. Every year when we do our annual report to the state, because we've got this detailed action plan, we'll be able to report out on those things, on the various status of the different actions in that action plan. So that helps us to support the implementation of the plan. Again, as the, because the plan is general, because it may change over time because 10 years is a long planning horizon, the actions that can be added to the action plan will reflect kind of the priorities of where we are at any given moment with that general plan. So that also helps us to implement the general plan as we move through this 10-year planning cycle. We're currently evaluating the action plan with all of the departments, so they had provided us feedback and input into the 89 actions that are within that action plan. And what we're looking to do is effectively after, hopefully, if the general plan is adopted by City Council and then ratified by the, by residents, that what we'll do is through that next budget cycle, we'll look at the resourcing for those actions, how they fit into each of the department's yearly plans, so that we're making sure that we're tying budget, yearly plans and the action plan together so they all feed each other so that we make sure that we're moving forward with those actions.
Don't forget the council strategic.
And the council, absolutely, thank you, Councilmember Spilsbury, you're absolutely right because that sets the top level of what we're all trying to achieve. And I think the general plan, a lot of the guiding principles and strategies really kind of support that, so thank you for that. We'll do that yearly coordination of resource allocation with each of our June budget cycles.
So Mayor Council, just to Mary's point, and I think we have to be careful because these action plans are not necessarily, we're checking it off the list. It is not, that's not how these read. A lot of these are, it says right here on the graphic, 60 of the 89 are already in progress. And there isn't, sometimes it's just sustaining a program, an initiative and an effort over a period, you know, continuously. It's not, we accomplished this, check it off. Now, there's some of those, right? We're going to change a code, we're going to do something, but there's a lot of these are providing a level of service or coordinating training with police and fire or whatever. Well, that, we don't check that box off and say, well, we did that this year, that was great. You know, it's an ongoing. So the fact that when you go through here, you're going to see 60 of the 89, we're already doing something about it and I think they'll just continue. They're already part of a department's efforts coordination. Now, there will be some, no doubt, Mary made a good point, that after this is approved in the next budget cycle, we would come during the priority session of council, maybe talk about, oh, here's some initiatives, actions in here that maybe would be new and we may require additional resources, so then we would start addressing it during that time.
All right, yes, Ms. Spilsbury.
I blurted it out earlier, so I thought I'd wait and be appropriate, proper this time. Okay, so that was actually going to be my question because the way the chart is set up, like, I think we, you know, you'd want to see those numbers move to the complete and a lot of what we're doing isn't the checklist. And so are, do we have like progress meters or something? And maybe that chart is misleading.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Because it is stuff that is, we're going to be working on for 10 years and after, right? So I think that chart is misleading in that we're not going to see all those numbers move to complete.
Mayor, Councilmember Spilsbury, it's a great point and one of the things we'll do is working with each of the departments. What we can do is identify the actual metrics or tasks that were completed as part of that action, as part of our report out. So if there's an action, I'll just say, you know, inventory all the historic sites in the city of Mesa. Well, maybe that's going to take us two years. And if we do that, what we can say is we've inventoried 50% of the historic properties in the city of Mesa and we'll be able to report out on that. And then that continues as an in-progress action until that point where it does get completed, but we'll be able to report out on the progress of each of those in-process actions. Some, as Mr. Brady said, will be a one and done, you know, a text amendment, something like that. Those are very easy to say, these are completed, and that's where we can start to look at new things adding on.
That's a great point, though.
Yeah, what I mean, I understand like so many of these things are really hard to like measure, right? Like we're not going to have like a goal number with very distinct marks along the way or whatever. So, yeah, I would take off a chart like that, that's that clear cut of complete just because of what it says.
No, great point, thank you.
All right, Council, more questions on this?
Oh, and just real quickly, Mary just mentioned, because I think this would be important, each year, right, we're going to do, after we, this is approved, then each year there's an annual report.
That's correct.
So that would then be a way to kind of even continue, like I'm reading one here about partner with G-PAC and ACA on economic development. Well, we're not going to do that one year and stop. So, yeah, we've got, maybe in the annual plan, we'll talk about the things that are ongoing, what'd you say, what's, what'd you accomplish? Accomplished or whatever, but they continue into the next year also.
Ms. Duff.
First of all, on the action plan, is there a opportunity to comment on that or have any, you know, input on, how is that?
When we come back after this is approved, then we would be coming back to council and that could be a conversation in a future budget discussion.
Okay.
Or priority, or council priority discussion.
Right, right. And?
And I don't think you're limited to this, right? I mean, over 10 years, there'll probably be something that'll come up that supports any one of these top categories and council may want to direct it.
Perhaps, and then we could prioritize what is the most important.
Oh, we're going to have to, right? We can't take on 89 things all at once, yeah.
Yeah, and identify the funding source.
Right.
If necessary, if it's not ongoing and already embedded.
Right, exactly.
To do, yeah, okay. I'd like to see, we'll get to this, but a little bit more detail on how, you know, like a priority, like a funding source. And if there is a metric, a deadline, a measurement, like, you know, net zero emissions, you know, perhaps we have a deadline on that, you know?
Well, we have the Climate Action Plan, have a date for that, yeah.
But just on a number of them, that we have a measure, some kind of measure that we're making progress or have a deadline or have something definable there. I hope that it will, I like how it's separated and that we have to do these action plans, but I also want to make sure that it accomplishes our aspirational goals. Otherwise, what's the point of the general plan if it's just aspirational and not measurable? And our last general plan, there's a number of things, it's excellent general plan, I have no complaints about it, but of the projects that it did list, they're still outstanding. So, yeah, somehow to kind of make progress where we are, where our priority is, what funding source, and are we making any progress, which we've talked about in our action plan, I think is great, thank you.
Well, I'm sorry, I know there's more to be said, more questions, but before we leave that point, how many of the 80 some odd action points, how many of those would require council action and how many are directed more towards staff?
So Mayor Giles, Council, I don't think we've done that analysis. We can have a look at that to see what would require. So for example, I can talk specifically about planning, I know we have four or five different text amendments, council would eventually have to weigh in on those, but staff would prepare them as part of our, you know, ongoing work plan. So we can do that and look at it and see how many are the council's responsibility versus just staff ongoing operational assignments.
I think that would be useful, so that we can, if we're sitting on something and not taking action.
Right. And remember, I'll, the general plan is aspirational, right? It's, that's the whole intent, to have a 10-year perspective. This gives us some to-do list, but, you know, the language in here is increase access to parks and recreation. Now, that's a future council opportunity to say, okay, what does that mean? How do we translate that? How are we going to accomplish that? That's a discussion. And then you could, really, you go back to the Parks Master Plan and say, okay, what's the standard we're going to use, right? What's the, you know, we want to be able to, everybody to have a park within a certain distance or whatever. So these are the conversations we'll come back to. We just have to figure out, the council will have to help us work through the priority of what's most important, what resources are available. But there are a lot of things here that are just, we continue to do today, we will continue. Now, I would also suggest, you're probably going to come back, councils in next year or years, in future years, are going to say, I don't see this, but I think it accomplishes part of the, of the general plan and we'll add that in here. I mean, when we did the last general plan, we, I don't remember how much we talked about education, but the council's made a very strong commitment to education and priorities. Now it's in here and we can use those programs that were currently promised program, all these others, and we can now create a metric and we can accomplish that. So it's, it's kind of, it's a lot of layers of different things that we're going to have to work through.
Thank you. Let's go Frankie and then Alicia.
I just go, I mentioned in the slide, annual report to the state, is that annual report given to the city council as well?
Yeah.
And then just to go further on that, I think, you know, as we, I just, as we go along the years, I think it's important to, you know, provide that information around the report that is not so static to the public, you know, we've invested, we have activated thousands of people to chime in on supporting. I think getting that information on what we've done each year or whatever that timeline is as far as reporting back, I think it's important to say that we've done these items, right? Sometimes as a city or government, we don't toot our horn as much and so how we can elaborate the things that you participated in the general plan, how those things are coming to fruition is important as we move forward so that we can, you know, continue to build trust and continue to build information on what's happening in the city. I think I just want to emphasize those pieces because this plan is a document, but the actions and the way we have that conversation back to the public makes a big difference on how people perceive what's going on in their city, right? And so that's, that's something that, you know, all this work, all this effort that's gone to this plan, if we don't communicate back on the, on the work that is going on within this plan, I think we, we make a disservice and we have to re-explain to people again and again. So I think part of that process over the next 10 years is to really emphasize and be intentional about reporting back on the work that's happening, right? So I think that's going to be a task. It is not easy, right? Because some of these pieces are really mundane and really tech-savvy or complicated and involves various different layers, but figuring out a way and how we can provide that information back to the public is important, right? Because that's what people remember and we should, should be in that process as well, right? So.
Councilmember, thanks for bringing that. And if you think about last week, last Thursday, that's what we tried to do as staff.
Yeah.
Back to the council.
For sure.
To say, hey, last year we met, here's what we've done. I think what you're telling me, and we kind of heard this as a theme, we need to do a better job of not just telling you, we need to make it broadcast to the public and say, okay, last year, during the last year, we had these priorities, here's what we've accomplished. And doing this, and it would relate to this too.
Yeah, yeah.
Same idea.
Alicia.
Well, I think you're kind of hearing a theme of, you know, specificity, measurability, those types of things. And, and as you say, Mr. Brady, this is going to be multi-layered, but I think it's important that we do continue to kind of build it out a little bit and prioritize and get a little bit more specific on some of these. And I don't necessarily have a suggestion of how you do that, but some that are so much more general and, and how you pull out the more specific and prioritize those, I think it is really important. Because without getting specific and being able to measure, I don't know how we hold ourselves accountable, really. So I do think that that's important to be able to do that. And I'll just give you one example, and I know I've talked to you all about this one, continue to expand the city's bicycle and pedestrian network. I mean, that, I think that's great, but that's got to be way more specific. Exactly what does that mean? You know, just a general, let's, let's expand it or, and it kind of goes back to the parks example, continue to expand park opportunities. I mean, that's, that's a great aspiration, but what specifically and where does it fall in the priority list?
Yeah, and that's what the council would do during a budget discussion.
Yeah.
It's an allocation of resources.
Yeah.
And where is it in the priority of everything else?
Right, so in the budget discussion, will we be referring to this? Will you bring?
Well, I think next year is what Mary say, once it's approved and I think during the next council priorities discussion, we could talk about that. Which one of these, 89, you know, do you want to create as a priority for the coming year? And are there resources available to support it?
Thank you. I'm sorry, please.
So before we end the presentation, we just have, want to remind everybody that there's still opportunity to comment on the general plan until March 4th is when the public comment period ends. We do have several open houses that are coming up, the first one being tonight at Taylor Junior High, but we are having an open house in each one of the districts and you can see on the screen the dates, they're going to be both this weekend and then the following weekend, so encourage everybody to come out and participate in those. And then we will be having study sessions with the Planning and Zoning Board over the people and the economy like we did today to discuss those sections with them. And then in April, we'll be going to them for their recommendation and also to our General Plan Advisory Committee for their recommendation to City Council. And then coming back in May for the final action on this before it gets put on the ballot.
Thank you for the presentation, thank you for the many hours of work that went into creating this document. Ron, thank you to you and your committee for your involvement and thank you to, how many people in the city of Mesa would you estimate at this point have engaged through your outreach?
Your social media, everything else. What do you got now?
Total, I think there are about 10,000, 10,000 people.
Yeah, that sounds about right, it was 8,000 something.
Yeah, and we, I know at least one, we have a few different streams of ways people can give feedback at this point. The one that has closed officially has 800 there, so we have at least added 800 responses. And I know that we're going to surpass that and probably surpass 1,000 on this, so we'll, we're moving up.
And we're starting a new round of more meetings this week.
Tonight?
Tonight, first one.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda, how, Council, how about we take a five, 10-minute break and we'll come back and have the long-awaited Jay O'Donnell presentation that's been bumped once or twice already, right? All right, let's come back at, let's start again at 9:10, okay?
1964, though, it's not that old.
All right, if we could ask everyone to please take a seat, it is, it is 9:10 and we've got more important items on the agenda, so Jay and Kelly, thank you for being here. Look forward to hearing your presentation.
Good morning, Mayor and Council, thank you for inviting us here today. We, I'm joined today by my colleague Kelly Kepfer, she is the Economic Development Project Manager. She's been with the city just about 11 years now.
Over.
Over 11 years. And her purview includes project management, but particularly around the small business And her purview includes project management, but particularly around the small business services and entrepreneurship development. So we're here today to talk briefly about the economic development lines of service, and then also to talk about our programs and services under the Mesa Business Builder umbrella, give you an update on Mesa Business Builder at the studios and the schedule for that venue opening, as well as provide you some information on the programming and staffing for our next-level business support. The small business, Mesa Business Builder at the studios was originally presented conceptually a couple of years ago as the Small Business Learning Lab to be funded by ARPA dollars. So we'll provide you an update on what that looks like and then ongoing operational costs as well. I think you all know our mission in the Office of Economic Development is about advancing businesses and growing quality jobs. Our lines of service include business attraction, retention and expansion, redevelopment, workforce development, and then the reason we're here today, which is small business development and entrepreneurship. The introduction of the Mesa Business Builder at the studios, as I mentioned, it was originally conceived as a small business learning lab. It's become so much more, and it fits really well into the family of brands under Mesa Business Builder, so we just thought it absolutely natural to call it Mesa Business Builder at the studios. And we'll be calling Mesa Business Builder MBB for short, so we will be using an acronym, fair warning. Since launching Mesa Business Builder, we've steadily grown our programs and services under the MBB umbrella. In the information and communications category, we have the mesabusinessbuilder.com, the website, the new and improved Mesa Business Resource Guide, and then our monthly newsletter that goes out to more than 6,500 subscribers. It's called The Business Advocate. Under the education and training category, we have Mesa Hub, that is our online digital education platform, our flagship Small Business Assistance Program that we launched three years ago. It provides one-on-one professional consulting free to Mesa-based small businesses. And just to let you know, we've provided more than $775,000 in services to 342 businesses over the course of the last three years, and will continue to do so with ongoing funding that council dedicated to this program. And then we also are piloting the MBB Educates You program this year. It's new, it provides free tuition to, for Mesa Community College classes in 17 different certificate programs for businesses who are enrolled in the Small Business Assistance Program. And then finally, our specialty spaces. Launch Point, which is Mesa's business incubator, has hosted 46 companies or ventures to date that have raised more than $250 million in capital investment and created more than 300 jobs as they've spun out of Launch Point. Currently, we have 17 businesses in residence, that's the most we've had in there to date, so it's great, or most we've had at one time. And then lastly, our newest offering, that is Mesa Business Builder at the studios, that is our focus today. And for the rest of our presentation, Kelly Kepfer will be sharing the operations information on that.
Jay, you've already sparked a bunch of questions, so Ms. Pillsbury and then Mr. Summers.
Scott's trying to beat me, but I got it first. No, so back to the graph. This is really exciting to me, just to see how much support we give. I, you know, was a previous small business owner for over 20 years, and so I think through all of our growing pains over the years, and how much a lot of this could have helped along the way. I also find this to be very overwhelming. And so if I was a small business owner and I was looking at this, how would I know where to start? How do I know what would help me? Can you walk me through that process of, is there someone that says, oh, this is what you want to do, then you need to start here?
Actually, that's a great question, Mayor, Councilmember Pillsbury.
Yeah.
The best place to start is the website, mesabusinessbuilder.com. And on there, it's a very clear, chapter-oriented, the buttons are very clear on where you need to go. And people come back to that all the time because you enter, as a small business owner or an entrepreneur, you enter the continuum at various stages, and so you can always come back there and find your way. We added a small business checklist this year, which has been very helpful. We're also adding podcasts into our program of work this year to talk about permitting and signage, along with Development Services Department. So we're trying to be really helpful to small businesses and meet them where they are. And the website is tremendously helpful. The resource guide is also completely overhauled, so there are a number of resources and links that you can find there. And then you can always call Kelly.
Okay, that's what I was going to ask, is there a person they can talk to? That's you.
That would be me.
Great.
Thank you, Jay.
I think Frances, got a question.
With the slide, Jay, the, I know we have other assets that we're thinking about, or we've been working around like Pipeline AZ, and how does that interwork with these systems that you've developed to, you know, Pipeline is specifically kind of workforce-driven for, and this is more like informational-based, but I think it makes sense to connect these as much as possible so that folks are not, are seeing these in various different ways, right? As far as how they can help their own business, but once they, you know, sometimes as they grow, they can connect with systems that, you know, are looking for people to fill in for their own businesses, looking for jobs. So how's that interconnected with the other pieces that y'all have on the workforce side?
Mayor, Vice Mayor Heredia, great question and great points. And we do have Job Connect Mesa, which is online right now, and that is where Pipeline is living. It is integrated to some degree, but once we have the Pipeline, Mesa Pipeline AZ finished, we'll be rolling that out, and we'll come back to you and present that whole program and how it connects with the educators, the case managers, the workforce service providers, and then the employers. We'll show you that model, and we will more fully integrate it at that time into the small business programming as well. But once we get a little bit deeper into this presentation, we'll be incorporating workforce development opportunities and talent training and education into the studios as well to have that in-person connection and training delivery methodology as well.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Jay. Mayor Giles and members of council, thank you for the opportunity to be here with you today and share more about our newest project. As we started to shape Mesa Business Builder at the studios, we developed our vision for the space, or our why, why are we doing this? And our desire is to create a location that serves as a physical connection for the business community, to find and access resources and assistance that is available to them in Mesa, and to build a model for local government support that fosters the creation of a strong, engaged, and collaborative environment for building and growing business ecosystems. With this in mind, our purpose is to have a place that promotes the adoption of digital development tools, offers access to state-of-the-art equipment, and provides spaces for skill-building and networking opportunities for Mesa's small businesses to promote resiliency in today's We envision Mesa Business Builder at the studios as a place for businesses to come and connect with resources and identify solutions to solve problems or overcome challenges. We anticipate that all of our audiences will use this space as a venue to meet with their target groups and deliver services. Mesa Business Builder at the studios also provides a physical extension for the city's Small Business Assistance Program by offering a place for companies and entrepreneurs to come for in-person, one-on-one professional advising and consulting, training, and networking opportunities. It is a modern, multi-use, flexible space that accommodates everyone from single entrepreneurs to larger groups, and provides access to technology tools such as a computer lab, podcast studio, augmented reality and virtual reality studio, and digital development zones for gaming and app development, as well as conference spaces with video capability, event spaces, and a variety of collaboration areas. It is also a great place for our community partners, such as our vendors in the Small Business Assistance Program, our education partners, both K-12 and higher education, and as well as our workforce development partners, to have a place to offer direct, in-person services, training, and education at one site. Mesa Business Builder at the studios also serves as an extension for our other city departments, such as our Development Services Small Business Assistance, to have a place to have a physical presence to meet with businesses, to offer trainings, meet with other groups, and extend their services to larger audiences as well. So we thought that we would share a couple of conceptual designs for the upper floor. We are currently under construction, and we're very excited for the space. We're currently, if all things, if schedule holds, we're planned to open the first week of May, and we're very excited about the features and benefits that are going to be available to the community. The first picture represents the reception area. So this is where you would first come, you would check in, you would be able to ask questions, check out equipment that's available at the space, and get connected to resources. One of the things that we have consistently heard from businesses as we have met with them and spoke with them over time is that they want to connect with actual, real people. They don't just necessarily want digital assistance. And then the second area shows the multi-use space or the event space. This is great because it can be configured for large groups and/or it can be closed off for privacy. So there are sliding glass partitions that divide the space as well. It can be set up for classroom style with tables and chairs, or the glass doors can be opened, and it can stand out into the overflow space to accommodate larger gatherings. As said, it can accommodate up to 60 or 80 guests, I'm sorry, for seating. So initially, as we open Mesa Business Builder at the studios, we are planned to have scheduled events and be open during these times for businesses to allow us to gauge demand and plan for the increased activity. We are currently building out the schedule for training and events, and currently in the pipeline, we have venture capital and angel investor workshops, workforce job fair and trainings, workshops on artificial intelligence for manufacturers and professional service businesses, succession planning and business valuation workshops, equipment training, and a variety of other workshops and trainings on a whole host of business topics. For Mesa Business Builder at the studios, our primary goal is to deliver value-add education and training to the business community through our ongoing Small Business Assistance Program. Oops, sorry, guys.
That's okay.
Through our ongoing Small Business Assistance Program, our business retention and expansion visits that we conduct with more than 100 businesses each year, and our roundtables, we are continuously collecting feedback from the businesses that attend and asking, what types of assistance do you think would be most beneficial to you? And then we take that information to hopefully provide impactful and helpful trainings for them in their business. As we gather this information, there are some things that rise to the top, and we consistently hear the following as areas of need from businesses. First is technology, so learning to use and deploying technology in their business. Second is financial literacy, understanding how to read financial statements, different types of business financing and business credit are top of mind. By far, marketing is the number one request for assistance. That shouldn't be a surprise to anybody. So from website development to social media, branding, sales development, these are, again, these are top requests that we receive from businesses. And then additionally, we also get requests for workforce training and development. So everything from finding and hiring employees to soft skills training, and then industry-specific topics. These are all areas that we will focus on.
Mr. Summers.
Actually, it caught me by surprise. I mean, I would have thought that would have been on the top, but access to venture capital, I would have thought would have been top of the, top of the list.
Mayor Giles and Councilmember Summers, it depends on who you're speaking to. So I always think about the, this land of small business development and entrepreneurship that we plan, I call it a, like, think of it as a Venn diagram. So you have your entrepreneurs, and then you have your small businesses, and they do overlap at times, but often they're very different. Because your entrepreneurs are trying to build scalable businesses, oftentimes they're seeking venture capital, equity investment capital, and things of that nature, where many of our small businesses are seeking debt financing.
And are we tapping into venture capitalists to help connect them?
Yeah.
As part of this program?
Yes.
Great.
Absolutely.
Fortunately, I know what a Venn diagram is, so.
Kelly, so is it my understanding that we are going to welcome or other businesses, services, like a banker could come in one day and just said, I'm here to talk to us about general banking thing, or maybe a venture capital service, or so that they have access to having those conversations with those professions to help them, you know, make decisions about their direction?
Mayor Giles and Councilmember Duff, we do plan to have scheduled hours whereby we will have bankers and/or professionals from the field that will make time available in scheduled slots, so businesses can drop in and meet with or talk with a banker and learn more about their areas of need.
But we'll be careful that it's not a...
We don't want to...
Endors.
Endors.
But those are the experts, right? So you kind of have to figure out with the balance and make it work.
Right. It's meant to be a learning environment, not an advertisement for a specific business. That's correct.
Just a question on different languages availability. I know a lot of this information is available in Spanish, and some, we promoted some capabilities for presentations in Spanish, but there's also been some need for some of the Asian languages as well, and more specific pieces, but what's the, what's the dynamic of offerings in different languages that we can give out to or support?
Mayor, Vice Mayor Heredia, the language question is a great one, and I think that's something that we'll need to assess the demand. The way we have worked in the past with our Small Business Assistance Program, if we have a client who really prefers speaking in native language, we can fund a translator or an interpreter to sit with them and do the translation services. So I think we can probably accommodate it that way initially, but then we could also offer workshops in specific languages for specific categories. That's something that we've done before. When we initially launched the Mesa Cares Program, we had computer literacy classes provided in Spanish, and I think we had 14 or 15 students at a time that were taking the class in Spanish only.
Thank you.
So as we open the space, we will be incorporating a space reservation system to allow guests to book for use of the venue. This will allow for online bookings of rooms and equipment within the space, and the online booking will capture the information of the guest. It will back that up in our database, and we will have customizable time limits for each space. That being said, there will be times when maybe longer engagements will need to happen, and we will work directly with organizations to reserve the space and then to coordinate the logistics for use. And then Mesa Business Builder at the studios will have regular policies and procedures for guests that visit and use the facility. They will receive guidelines, and there will be a way for us to do an electronic acknowledgement and then keep a record or a file of that, that they have been provided those guidelines. And because the venue will have special equipment, we will be doing regularly scheduled trainings to provide our guests with information and teach them how to use that equipment appropriately. These trainings will also provide a certificate once they're completed so that they are approved and okay to use the gear in the space. At this time, I'm going to go ahead and turn this presentation back over to Jay and let her talk about the last couple of items.
Thank you, Kelly. So this particular venue will require staffing. We will be adding a project manager and a program assistant to serve the clients and offer scheduled programming throughout the week. We do anticipate that there will be several functions that fall outside of the traditional business hours, so that's one of the reasons we felt it necessary to have at least two staff dedicated to this facility. Contractors will also be utilized to set up the equipment and to train our guests and provide certification, and then they'll also... provide certification, and then they'll also obviously deliver the training, for example, using the podcast booth or the AR/VR studio and equipment. We also plan to reach to our educational partners to provide internships where needed because I think that that's one of the great opportunities for us to engage students and make sure that they have a work environment, that they can put on their resume to build their skill set as well. Finally, in terms of the budget, the ARPA contribution for this particular project is $4.897 million of ARPA dollars for construction and FFNE. This fiscal year, we have requested a contingency for $171,758, and then for ongoing operating budget for FY '25 and further, we're requesting $530,000 to cover staffing, operations, and technologies, and supplies. So in terms of next steps, we'll be recruiting staff, selecting the security hardware and software, the reservation system, we'll be developing further programming and finalizing our marketing plan, and then we'll be preparing for the launch event, which will happen the first or second week in May of this year. Questions?
Mr. Summers?
Thank you. First of all, I'm just going to say I support this. I'm pretty excited to see that in really over eighteen years, we've gone into supporting small businesses. Councils have supported expanding those programs, and now we're looking, seeking to bring those, I don't want to say under one house, but creating more efficiencies with this and services surrounding the businesses. So moving forward, I would support this a great deal. The only thing I would add is that I would, I would like to see us work a little bit with Mesa Chamber of Commerce to make sure that the services that they have, particularly around veterans and other, other groups, they can provide some value-added services to this project for us. But great program.
Before we move on, could you talk, I mean, we have had a big, during the pandemic, we partnered with the Chamber in a big way on this topic, and to what extent does that continue? What role do they play in this, in this ecosystem here?
Mayor and members of council, we are currently under, we have a contract with the Mesa Chamber of Commerce now to deliver programming and services for the Small Business Assistance Program. We anticipate that that will continue, and we're excited for them to use the space for many of their activities. They have leads groups, they have committees that meet monthly, so we, we, we hope that they use this space on a very regular basis. I think that they're going to be a great partner going forward, along with other, other, like the Asian Chamber and the East Valley Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, so absolutely.
No, thank you, Mayor. That's, that's great to hear, just because it, nobody wants to hear me. Because it wasn't in the presentation, it's good to hear that, that, that relationship is going to continue to go, grow and, and because they're your important partner for us.
Definitely.
Thank you for asking that question. Ms. Spillsbury, I know we have some questions over here as well.
Thank you. I, I'm super excited about this. I think this could be just an amazing service and asset to our residents, and I had a friend reach out to City of Mesa starting a business, and she had an incredible experience. So I know it's already working, so this is only going to make that better. A couple of questions I had, so as of right now, there's no, like, open hours of drop-in or anything. Everything needs to be pre-scheduled, pre-programmed.
That's correct.
So is it during certain hours of the day that they can program, though? Or they can schedule their time there?
Mayor, Councilmember Spillsbury, we don't have specific open hours that you can program. I think what we'll probably do is set up some limited times during the week, and then if they want to go above and beyond that, they can contact staff. So it might be a nine to six that's available for booking four or five days a week, and then if they want something outside those hours, they can...
Okay, so someone who maybe works a full-time job that would, wants to do a podcast at seven o'clock at night or something, like, would you work with them on that?
Yes, absolutely. And that's, that's one of the reasons we're having the staff so that they can be flexible, so that maybe somebody can take more of an evening shift or maybe a Saturday morning. We think that there might be a demand for some weekend hours for functions.
It's not going to be your typical seven to six, we decided that.
Correct.
Seven to six kind of, you know, standard hours. We know that that doesn't work, so.
Right, okay.
We're trying to be flexible. Yeah, and the thing is, when you walk, okay, what's the total space between the second floor and the basement?
Seventeen thousand.
So it's seventeen thousand square feet of space. That's a lot of space, and there's a lot of ducks and crannies and stuff, and so it would be, from a staffing perspective, just to have a kind of open-ended, would be really difficult. It'd be very expensive because you don't, whether people showed up or not, you would have to have somebody upstairs and downstairs, and even in those spaces, there's all kinds of different places. And with all the equipment that we are going to have, we just felt like it'd be easier to have, build this approach for now.
Right, okay, that makes sense. And then how are we handling, is it only available for Mesa residents who are going to keep businesses in Mesa? I mean, do we, what, how do you figure that out?
Mayor, Councilmember Spillsbury, we anticipate that it be open to the public, and I don't, I don't anticipate that we'll be limiting it in a, any capacity. It's if you have an organization and you want to host an event, if you have a workshop that you would like to give, that this is the space, a venue.
They don't have to prove that they're a Mesa resident to use it?
Not yet.
Not yet, okay, just as we start, okay.
This is our open arms approach.
Okay, love it, we're so inclusive, okay.
I guess that segues into my question, and, and you probably answered this, I know this has been in the works for a while and prior to me joining council, but how do we measure, what's the measure of success here?
Great question. Mayor, Councilmember, go forth. I think that we have set up KPIs or key performance indicators around the number of events that we have, the number of attendees who are coming through the door, the number of certificates that we're awarding for the equipment and workshops that we're having. So the, the, the way we're measuring our Small Business Assistance Program now is through the number of utilized, utilized hours, and so we kind of are looking at ways we can do that in the Studios building as well. I know that ASU on the first floor, they number, they track the number of events and the number of guests at those events. We're looking at adding another layer to that with, in terms of the training and the certificates that we're awarding. Kelly, you might have something to add?
Yes, Mayor and Councilmember go forth. One of the things that we're looking at, particularly with our scheduling software, is the ability to track who comes in and out of that space, as well as heat mapping from what area of the city that they're visiting from. So we can track the number of visits for one particular user, as well as where they're coming from, and how much time that they're actually utilizing the facility. So I think as we get a little bit further along the path here, we can certainly hone in on the KPIs that are most important to us to, to gather, capture, and then report back out on.
Because our, our ultimate goal, right, is to strengthen our, our small business economy here in Mesa. I mean, it'd be great, was it Valleywide, but right? Isn't that the ultimate goal? So, okay.
And I, I would add, every year, we do a survey, a customer satisfaction survey for the Small Business Assistance Program, and we look at what, you know, what programs they really liked, what they felt helped move the needle. Did their sales increase? Did they feel more confident as a business owner after going through this program? And consistently, we've received high scores. So we can do the same sort of thing with the Studios and those people who are using the Studios frequently. Thank you.
Francisco?
Just a question, so the first floor will still be operated by ASU, right?
Correct.
And so the programming there and operations is ASU. In addition, have we talked to ASU on business-related activity that be partners with, in the second and base, in the second floor and basement here? What's that conversation been like with ASU?
Yes, Mayor and Councilmember Heredia, we actually currently do participate with ASU in a monthly coordination meeting, and our plan is to collaborate with ASU as they are also users in the same building. The intent here is to augment what's happening within the ecosystem and not to duplicate what already exists. So in a perfect world, we know exactly what ASU is doing in their space, and how can we, A, raise awareness, and rising tides lift all ships, right? How is it that we can work together, collaborate together, to offer value-add training, services, and assistance within that building as one cohesive space?
Perfect. Just curious, what, how's it been as far as activity on the first floor? I know I, we've used it for a lot of meetings to host people, it's a great space, and I've heard kind of rave reviews from people that drop, that drop in and utilize it for studying and for, you know, conversations with other stakeholders, right? So what's, do we have any information on the first year or two years?
I've heard, I've heard that, yeah, I don't, anecdotal more that it's happening, a lot of the after-hours kind of conversation, and things you just talked about, we're trying to drop in conversation, so, but it's, I mean, they're self-staffing it and utilizing it, so I guess we'd hope to see a little bit more of the, what's the word? Taking the technology and the learning experience from the mix over there, but it's still working for them, and they seem to be busy enough to keep the staffing going, so.
Well, to that point, I, I, I think this building is still kind of coming back into the public awareness, right? It was a data center for a decade or two, and so people got used to not going there, and people, a lot of people are unaware that it's a very beautiful, very functional building. And so I think as, much like the Post, we, I mean, I think very quickly, the Post is becoming very popular, and I think it's going to, a lot of demand for the use of that. I think this building is in that same category, so I appreciate that there's some flexibility built into this because I think the demand for this utilization of this building is going to really escalate. Yes, Jen?
On the budget, that is for the upper floor, the Small Business Assistance area and the Workforce Development area, so it's the complete area that we're manning, the budget, okay.
Mayor, Councilmember Duff, the, the budget is for both floors, and so you, in terms of workforce development, it's really, it's really integrated. You might have training on the second floor because we have a computer lab there. You might have training downstairs in the lower level because we have the AR/VR lab there. So we, we're really looking at it as integrated space.
Are both spaces going to be ready shortly, or is it just one? Oh, okay, good. Because I know the lower one has a lot of infrastructure-type technology things and that we have to prepare, and it's very, yeah, okay, great, yeah, great. Well, I really like this because we're taking the Mesa Business Builder to the hub and actually making a physical location for, to engage in a deeper, more meaningful way for their businesses, and so we're not only building new businesses, but we're helping businesses scale and grow, which is significant for our cities since, and really, small businesses since it represents the majority of businesses in our city, is the resiliency. So when we go through all kind of economic ups and downs and stuff like that, the resiliency is in the many small businesses that we have, to be able to always have, you know, a steady ship. So are you going to have any, like, drop-in hours or all have to be scheduled? How, are you doing, like, okay, on Wednesdays from noon to two, we'll have a drop-in, or is it all going to be scheduled?
Initially scheduled, and then we'll, we'll reassess after a few months.
As I said before, it is a lot of space.
Yeah.
And there's just a lot of places you could wander, wander into, and it would be very difficult right now, not really knowing how it's going to be used. We'd have to double or triple the staff to cover all the different areas. So the idea is let people come in, schedule it, and we'll see, we really just need to get people in the space, see if, you know, what, how are you, I think it's set up to, it can means, it can serve so many different interests. I think we want to get that going first before we decide where to go.
I can see the advantage of your booking in advance. You have the knowledge in advance, what they're seeking, and making sure you have the resources and, and information that they're seeking without, again, making another appointment, so, okay.
Great, thank you. I'm, I'm looking forward to this, I'm very excited.
And if I could just chime in, you know, this is exciting because it showcases what Mesa can do, and using the funding to support our businesses, small and large, and, and, I mean, I'm sharing this information to others, and I'm hoping they'll utilize it. The question I had on the student interns, so I was, I looked at your list, and I didn't see EVID on there. Maybe EVID could be a player because there's some programming that they do that would complement small businesses, and a lot of the young people in the EVID programming are looking at creating businesses in their future and getting certifications, so maybe it'll help them as well. So just to reach out to them and, and see, and I don't know what the criteria is to be a student intern, but I'm, obviously, you should...
Show up.
Just show up.
On time.
I mean, that would be a start, right? Well, regardless, you know, yeah, this is, takes an older building that we had, a historic building, and converts it into a business model, and it helps provide programming for the fu, for the future, you know? This is going to be in perpetuity.
Yes.
So it's really exciting.
And just quickly, Mayor and Council, again, we said this, but don't, let's not give it for granted, this is ARPA dollars, and we made the point of making investments in the community that would continue on not, the operational costs, we're going to cover out of the general fund, but the capital cost is coming from ARPA, and making that investment coming out of COVID, where obviously we identified that as a huge need, this, I think, fits so perfectly into that storyline of how we're taking ARPA and really making an investment in our community. So, thank you.
Well, let's talk about that for just a second, because to me, this is one of the lessons of the pandemic. I think we were kind of, we realized very quickly going into the pandemic that there's a, really a role that we haven't fully embraced in interacting with the small business community. So we created the registry, we partnered with the Chamber, I mean, it seems like we're doing ninety percent more. I mean, I don't mean to disrespect our efforts with small business pre-pandemic, but am I correct in saying that none of, we weren't doing anything like this pre-pandemic, right?
Mayor, you are absolutely correct, yes. I, I would, I would consider what we had done before the pandemic as, as really serving the businesses in a more reactive way. We did have some programs and services, they were much, much more, I guess, online information. We did have Kelly working with small businesses with Launchpoint, but it would, it was what I would consider to be putting our toe in the water, and we are fully immersed now. I don't, I don't believe that there is any other city doing what we're doing with small business development and support.
Too late.
That's good to hear. All right, Council, any other questions on this topic? Great, thank you, Kelly, or thank you, it was worth the wait for that presentation. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda, item 2D is to take action on an appointment to the Economic Development Advisory Board. Thank you, Mr. Summers, seconded by Francisco. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you, that passes unanimously. Item three is to acknowledge receipt of board minutes. Is there a motion to that effect? Thank you, Ms. Summers, or Ms., excuse me, Ms. Spillsbury and Mr. Summers. Can, yeah, I got both the, both the motion and the, and the second in that misstatement, didn't I? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you, that passes unanimously. Item four is current events and conferences attended. Council, anything you'd like to share with us? Ms. Spillsbury?
He is wanting to get out of here, so I've got like an antsy child over here next to me. So we didn't get to do this last week, so I have a lot of things on my list, so I may be not going to read all of them, but I wanted to touch on a few things. I wanted to thank Amazon, Mesa Public Schools, and Levi Leva. So Levi Leva is a Gilbert police officer, but he's a Mesa resident, and he writes and illustrates bilingual children's books about historical figures, and we got Amazon to donate the money to purchase six hundred books for two different elementary schools, and those were just really fun events, and I wanted to thank them for doing that and getting, this is to support our literacy initiative in our city, so getting these books into the kids' hands, and they just loved it, it was so fun. And then that same day was the Mesa Police Department Academy class graduation, and I just love going to those. We had sixteen graduates, I think, for Mesa, so a big chunk of, of people joining our police force, and couldn't be more grateful for that. State of the City was amazing. Should I let someone else talk about the Gateway Airport concourse opening? I'll just end with, tonight is our first general plan meeting, and it was already mentioned, but it's at Taylor Junior High, and we wanted to just make sure residents knew, you know, the thousands of people that are watching, if they go to that meeting, they can go, and any of these are, they're open houses, so it's not a presentation, so you can go whatever time during that... open houses, so it's not a presentation, so you can go whatever time during that time period and leave and spend however much time you want there, so you don't have to be there right when it starts. So just want to make sure people know that, so, okay, that's it, thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Freeman.
So Art in the Park was at Reed Park, went to that, saw Mr. Brady there. That was a great attendance. I think they had like 600 people there, according to them. It was well-attended. I really enjoyed the music there. February 15th, the Mesa Historical Museum had a baseball night there, and if you haven't been down the museum recently, they have a really great professional baseball exhibit there, and they have a capital improvement campaign to redo the auditorium there that's really underutilized. And then the Mesa Chamber hosted our government affairs meeting with our police department. Chief Rankin talked about policing in Mesa and our neighboring communities. Reminder, this Friday, tomorrow, is also one of the general plan open houses at St. Luke's Church at 807 North Staple. And then I think, Mayor, you're going to talk about ribbon-cutting at EBIT?
I'd be happy to. This is of the, the living space.
Yes, I think that was pretty phenomenal.
Yeah.
So I'm done, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Ranky and then Alicia.
Real quick, shout out to the engineering department, Beth and our team. They do every year at Crisman Elementary Engineering Week, where they grab a cohort of sixth graders and build bridges and talk about sales tax revenue, and really exciting stuff for, for the, the kids there, but they, they really take into it, yeah, take into it, and build these bridges that they test and break, and see how much weight they were able to hold, and whoever wins gets a prize, right? So, so it's really neat, it's our 14th year doing this, so really going into some of these schools to talk about engineering, right? It's a, it's a thing that happens, so, and how we can recruit more engineers in our, in, in our pipeline for the future. In addition, also Saturday, going along with the theme of general plan, Dobson Ranch Community Center, it's six, eight, 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. Again, there, there'll be a meeting there if you're, have a, a free night on Saturday night, so make it a date or something. Talk about the general plan.
Wow.
And then, yeah, it's pretty exciting stuff. And then, of course, spring training starting Friday, tomorrow, right? So you already see a lot of fans at the Cubs stadium, they always get quite a bit, and I know the As as well, so spring training starts, good, good opportunity to highlight Mesa and what we do here, so.
That'd be a better date night.
Yeah, that, that's another good date night there, so, spring training games.
To balance the date night scene, after you do the general plan or whatever, there's some opportunities in downtown Mesa to, to have a brew. There's the home brewing 101 craft beer stroll going on on Saturdays from 12 to 5:00. The information is at downtownmesa.com and on their social. And there'll be a discussion in the yard, which is on McDonald, is open space that we have in the middle of our downtown. There'll be a discussion about home brewing and how you can get involved. And then there is a stroll that you can make to, I think, six of our breweries in downtown to taste some of theirs. And so that'll be a wonderful way to have another.
That's a way better.
Yeah, and another, another option for date night. And there is our activities most every day at the yard in downtown Mesa through April, so do check out their social to find out what those are. And Councilmember Freeman, you forgot to mention, at the Mesa Historical Museum, the museum cat fest will be going on on Saturday, I think from 10 to 4:00. And they'll have vendors, a fashion show, arts, crafts, guest speakers, and I think options to adopt adorable kitties.
Wow. Hopefully my wife is not watching this. Alicia?
What we got?
Just, just real quick, I know we all have been sitting here a while, I just wanted to say thank you to a couple of people. First is to one of our small businesses in Mesa, East Mesa, is Cuppa Joey Coffee Shop. They came out with me to celebrate and thank the, the staff at Taft Elementary, which is in my, kind of, it's in the county island, but in, surrounding, it's District 5. So thank you to them, they do a lot, and they're not just a small business, but they're a, a community partner. They do a lot in the community, giving back. They've given back tens of thousands of dollars over the years that they've been in business. So thank you to them. And then thank you to Commander Rash. Don Blake, Animal Control, and four of our community action officers went with me to a community in District 5 that's having some problems, some crime problems and issues that they've brought up to my, to me. And I just wanted to thank the Mesa Police Department for being very innovative. We went out there and we walked the neighborhood and knocked, and it was called a, basically a knock and talk, talk to the neighbors, every neighbor in the community about their concerns, encouraged them to organize a community block watch, and I think it was extremely effective. Many of the neighbors thanked us and were appreciative that, that we were out there. So Commander Rash kind of said that was a first for them, and they may pilot this and do this again in hotspot areas that they can make a difference with education first before enforcement. So it was a great morning, and I appreciate that they were working overtime to come do that, so, thank you.
That's great. Love to, love to see us do that more often. Council, anything else? I, I will, I do have a few things. Thank you for the support of the council and Channel 11, and my great staff, Casey and Yvonne, with the State of the City. Really appreciated that. I think hopefully we got the, did a good job of communicating all the great stuff that's going on in our city. I know several of you were at Hacktivate yesterday, and we'll go back later today to, to celebrate some of the awards there, but that's a great partnership with Mesa Public Schools, where we, we get some of the smartest people in our city, who are high school students, coming in and addressing some of the very important topics that we have. So that was fun to see. Also, a couple of days ago, we cut the ribbon on a new terminal at Gateway Airport. We had in attendance representatives from the White House and, and our congressional delegation. That was very appropriate, given that really the funding for the, the amazing infrastructure improvements we've seen out of Gateway, the terminal, the tower, really, it's federal money coming back to Mesa. So very pleased to see that, that we've been successful in doing that. And then, thank you, Mr. Freeman, for the invitation to talk about the EBIT groundbreaking that we had a month or two ago. Really, more like a ribbon-cutting, the, the buildings are going to be.
It's a ribbon-cutting.
Utilized in another month or so. This is a very innovative, great project, where EBIT got some funding from the state legislature to create what looks like a, a nice apartment complex. And what it is, is housing for aged-out foster care kids that are students at EBIT. So that's a very, what, I mean, isn't that a great idea? So thank you to EBIT and for being passionate about helping aging out foster students and, and helping their students. And the governor was there, and again, it was funded by state dollars, but again, that was, I was proud that that was happening on Main Street in Mesa. All right, I think, any, anything else to add, council? Mr. Brady, what is our schedule of future meetings affect?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a reminder, our next council meeting will be on Monday, February 26. Also wanted to let the council know, there will, there is a scheduled for February 28th, a joint meeting with a community meeting for Mesa residents that's being hosted by Mesa Public Schools and Mesa PD, talk about concerns regarding teen violence. So that'll be happening at Taylor Junior High on February 28th, I'm sorry, six, five? Five, starting at 5:00 o'clock.
Great, thank you. That concludes our agenda. Council, is there a motion to adjourn this meeting? Thank you, Mr. Freeman. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, thank you, we are adjourned.